Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 11th, 2017 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. Our meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is changing its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For correspondence, we have a letter from Donald Jarvis dated April 3rd, 2017, for the Student of the Month Awards. For March 2017, those students honored from Long Meadow High School are Samantha Mustaine for Culinary 1, Jason Zabarski for Culinary 2, Joseph McDonald for Brush Hill Academy, and Kobe Gale for Integrated Occupational Prep. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from last meeting. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes before we approve them? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the March 28th, 2017 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Seeing no comments, all those in favor? Thank you. Do we have any visitor comments from the audience? That's a chance where if you ever come to a school committee meeting, or you have a concern about the schools, and you ever want to come, you can come up to the microphone and you can ask a question during this part of the agenda called Visitor Comments. Your parents can ask a question, you can ask a question, so that's that part of the agenda. Next, the school committee announcements and recognitions. Do we have any announcements? Seeing none, we will move on to the agenda. And Dr. O'Shea, would you like to take over from here?
Sure, I'll do a brief introduction. So we have a packed house tonight, very exciting to see all our guests with us tonight. And the reason is that we had students from at the elementary, middle, and high level that were involved in creating public service announcements. It was actually two separate projects, but coincidentally, we got some good news that we had some winners at about the same time, so we brought everybody together here tonight. And so we had some elementary and middle school students who put together some public service announcements on recycling, and we had some high school students who participated in a contest to do a public service announcement billboard to discourage drunk driving. And so that was through the DA's office. So we have some, the winners of the recycling public service announcement with us tonight, and the students who participated in the District Attorney's drunk driving public service announcement competition. So I'll turn it over to the folks who did the work. I'm just here to celebrate with everybody and maybe start with Liz Bone, who worked closely with the Recycling Commission and coordinated the efforts for us.
Sure. I'm also on the Recycling Commission, and we had an idea a couple months ago that we wanted to let, we wanted to create a public service announcement and let everybody know that plastic bags don't belong in the recycling blue bin with your recyclables. It really belongs at like Big Y, or you have to recycle the bags separately. So we asked all the schools to see if anybody wanted to participate in the contest, and we got some really great entries. We got a lot of videos. We also got some posters and pamphlets, stickers. But tonight, we have three groups, three students from Glenbrook, three students from Center, and then a fourth student from Center. So I'd like to bring up Ms. Salvon from Glenbrook with her seventh graders, and maybe, and we were going to show the video that they created. Come on up, and I'll introduce you. Okay, we have, let's see if I say this right, Ava Rapucci. Okay, great. Gabriella Gauthier, and Madeline Chick.
I'm Emma Reese Salvon, and I think I'd like to let the ladies show their video that they work so diligently on for recycling.
I'm Madeline.
And I'm Ava.
Yeah, yeah, from the seventh grade at Glenbrook Middle School. We drift the topic off. We do think we're using and recycling plastic bags.
At the Materials Recycling Facility, or MRF, plastic bags are disrupting work in clogging machines. We will be sharing how to reuse plastic bags for other things, but if you have to get rid of them, they must go in the trash, not the recycling bins, or they can go into the specified bins at the grocery store.
One way to reduce plastic bags in our environment is to bring your own each time you go to the grocery store.
That's right, Ava. And if you second to bring your own bags, then you can try to reuse your plastic grocery bag as trash bags instead of buying more plastic bags that you're just going to throw out anyway.
Plus, plastic bags can also be used for pets picking up animal waste, and if you don't have a pet, share your bags with the pet on your way home.
And a final way to reuse plastic bags is that you can research schools and homeless shelters and accept them for donations. Schools may want to use plastic bags or even bottles for art projects, as we have here in Glenbrook.
And don't forget, plastics bags can be used for homeless shelters.
So, please remember, that plastic bags are not meant to be put in the recycling bins, because as they are processed through the recycling machine, plastic bags can get caught in the gears. When this happens, all the machinery must be stopped, which backs up the workload at the MRF until someone can fix the machinery.
And this unnecessary downtime costs the MRF a lot of money that could be better spent elsewhere, like in our schools and to help with other town and city needs.
Lastly, here's the link to Springfield MRF, where you can find a deep list of what you can and what can't recycle.
Yes, also, the MRF accepts recyclable materials from participating communities at no charge.
We've shared many ways to reduce, reuse, and recycle plastic bags, so please help the MRF by refraining from putting your plastic bags in the recycle bins.
Thank you for doing your best to reduce.
Reuse.
And recycle.
Thank you, Mrs. Salvon.
Nice work.
Well done.
Yeah, and so these public service announcements also are going to run on LCTV for the public to check out, and maybe they'll learn something, right?
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you so much. All right.
Bring in up our second group from Center School. We're going to have Madeline Bonavita.
Madison.
Madison, sorry. And Anna Antonopoulos, and their teacher, Ms. Giugio. And is Caitlin not here?
I don't think she's here.
Okay, okay, she's not here. The other participant was Kailin Griffiths.
So we wanted to thank Liz Bone and the Recycling Commission for this wonderful opportunity to really work on solving a real world problem, and I'm so proud of both you girls.
Thank you.
So it's that one. And that's the first one. And then let's go full screen. A-15, correct?
A-15, yes.
I wonder if we just started. We have to start. Let's try it again. Don't you love technology? I'm just going to go back in again.
We have this problem all the time.
Yeah. Restart it, restart. Because I already started.
Usually when Marty's running.
I was going to offer to help, but then I got just confused.
I've never seen that screen before.
Laura, you had sent it to me, you want me to try and connect?
That would be great, thank you. Yeah, it's just not wanting to go up.
Is this the right one? Oh, no, that's the other one, okay. Yeah.
She said she was coming. Yeah, she was on the screen.
So this is video.
Okay, so this is the one we wanted.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nice going.
See?
Very impressed.
Yeah. It was awesome.
Plastic bags in recycling?
Yeah, you can do that. Why, to the dolly?
I forgot, but I think my mom told me about it. Come inside. I bet she'll show you soon.
Hi, guys. Mom, why can't you put plastic bags in recycling?
Well, if you put the plastic bags in the recycling from home, then when they come to pick them up, they'll take them to the recycling center. And then when they go to recycle the bags, they'll get stuck in the conveyor belts and stop the whole recycling process.
Wow.
Plastic bags can be recycled, but not from home.
It says on my phone here that you can recycle plastic bags and Big Y or Staples.
Here, give me these three, got staples. Come on, let's go, let's go.
Plastic bags. Daddy. Here. Okay, let's go, huh?
Thanks for watching. Reduce, reuse, recycle.
Thank you.
And then, last but least, this is Amelia Benson, and she made a video all by herself. Would you like to come up and show your video? There's some parent cameos in these as well.
I don't want to give it away, but you made a great music choice here, too.
Good job.
I'll tell you about that.
All three tries, it's just another day you will be in paradise. All three tries, it's just another day you will be in paradise. All three tries, it's just another day you will be in paradise.
It might seem crazy what I'm about to say. Sometimes she's here, you can take a break. Hot air balloon, let's go space. Cause I'm happy, I'm alone, if you feel like a real star. Cause I'm happy, I'm alone.
Good job. Awesome. Thank you so much.
I like the Star Wars effect.
I know.
Yeah, I know.
You know, we talk a lot about, there's so much to cover in an elementary and middle school day, and even a high school day, but you think of projects like this where we're able to bring together the expectations related to civics, and research, and technology integration, and it all came together. I want to thank Ms. Salvon, Ms. Giugio for pulling that together. Their principals are here in support, Ms. Allen and Mrs. Sutton, we thank you for coming out, and Mr. Pers from the Recycling Commission, thank you for your time as well. But, great job, students, we're really proud of you guys. Well done.
Can I ask a question? Has anybody looked into how we can try to talk to local businesses about not carrying, not using plastic bags? I asked because when we traveled to California recently, the Target there had no plastic bags. It was amazing. They only had paper, and it made me think, what can we do to talk to Big Y or Target, local businesses, and ask them to go to only paper? Maybe not a question for tonight, but just something for us to think about as a community. It really piqued my interest. It wasn't even an option, which I thought was great. You either bring your own, or you can use their paper, so. I think it's important information that you all got out there, and really appreciate you doing it. Very creative. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you all. All right. So we'll move to the high school. Mr. Landers can talk to us about the high school public service announcement project.
Welcome. I'm going to introduce three students. Three students represented us at, on the recent contest for the District Attorney's Youth Advisory Board. Noelle Ehrenberg serves on it. She partnered with Vivian Lee and Sylvia Mueller, and they not only won the billboard aspect of the PSA, but they won $10,000 for Long Meadow High School to be used for technology. So they did impressive work. And I'm going to have them speak to us. Thank you.
As Mr. Landers said, we participated in an event the DA hosts called Stop the Swerve. This is the second event. I went to it last year, but Long Meadow didn't submit anything last year. There were two portions of submissions, there was PSAs, and then the billboard contest. So together, we created a billboard, as you can see over here. And the whole Stop the Swerve is against distracted driving, in particular drunk driving. So we created this billboard, and it's going to be on 91 pretty soon, so hopefully you'll see it up there. We're still trying to buy a place to put it, but hopefully soon. And yes, so we won $10,000 for the school and technology money. And Mr. Landers was kind enough to ask us where we thought the money was perhaps most needed. So we talked a lot about a lot of options, and we thought the best use of the money as of now will be to buy new iPads for the Health and Wellness Department at LHS, because it kind of also connects to what the Stop the Swerve event promotes, you know, safe, you know, driving, especially among teens, which is, we see as a problem, especially in this area. So that's what some of the money is going to. So I think it will really help the school, and we were just really excited to win it for LHS. It was very cool and super exciting when we went, and the DA handed us our award, so thank you. It was a cool opportunity.
Congratulations. We encourage students, and maybe you guys too, to attend the event next year. It'll be their third annual event, and maybe they'll be good.
So I think we've all been involved in this type of work for a long, long time, and I can't remember a time where students won a competition that brought in $10,000 to the school district. So congratulations, that's really, that's really quite a feat, and thank you guys for your participation. That's really impressive work, so we'll be looking for your billboard.
And the school committee's been talking this year about how much we need money for technology. It's one of the things we really, really need money for, so it's amazing. Thank you for all your hard work.
Congratulations. Thank you, guys. All right.
I just want, we had Caitlin who showed up a little late, so I just want to introduce you. You're one of the winners. Want to come just up and say hi?
Nice job, Caitlin.
Thank you for coming.
Wait, she didn't want to come up?
So there was a motion to accept.
Yeah. So we have a motion to accept the $10,000. The girls left.
We moved that the school committee accept the donation from the Public Service Announcement Competition sponsored by the District Attorney's Office in the amount of $10,000 to use towards technology at Long Meadow High School. Students from LHS won the billboard competition and the donation to the school.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Amazing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody, and thanks all the moms and dads for coming out.
Thank you for coming.
You can stay.
Make sure to watch us on TV. Go check out LCTV down the hall, wave, they're really nice. They work really hard, they're great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Is this ratings week or something?
Watch, watch us. Next on our agenda, we have indoor air quality discussion. Lost track of the agenda here. Sorry, guys. We have an update and discussion on indoor air quality for the middle schools, and with us tonight is Dan McCarthy to answer any questions and give us a little bit of an update on what's been going on. Thank you for coming, Dan.
So Dan is making his way up here. I provided you with the chart that you had seen back in February, the action plan relating to middle school indoor air quality. And so we added a column that to kind of describe for you our follow-up. And if you'll recall, there were sort of four areas that we focused on: air exchange, cleaning protocols, addressing or identifying any mold issues, and then finally, kind of take a look at opportunities for outdoor learning. So we have been making some steady progress. We appreciate Dan's efforts and his team's efforts to follow up, and the middle school principals have also been involved in coordinating our response. So the information's there, and Dan obviously can speak with greater expertise than I, and so, but I'll just say that with regard to air exchange, I think that the focus has been on addressing any monitoring and addressing any CO2-related issues. And we have begun the process of monitoring and tracking CO2 levels in the classrooms to make sure that we've got adequate air exchange. There's some facilities-related repairs that have been done in connection with that. With regard to cleaning, we did, you know, we've engaged in sort of the deep cleaning. Dan's got a HEPA backpack vacuum that we're experimenting with, with the guys. The staff has been involved in sort of decluttering and purging any unneeded materials that might contribute to any dust issues that we might have. We have, we're still addressing some of the carpeting issues, that's ongoing. So I think everyone's attention has been drawn to this issue in really positive ways, right, you know, from the DPW staff, facility staff, to the administration, to the teachers, to the custodial staff. I was really pleased to learn that Dan had lined up a training for a couple of custodians to, that's being sponsored by the Massachusetts Facilities Administrators Association, so trying to stay current. Dan has brought a lot of expertise with him into this role. He was, frankly, had, you know, really a lot of responsibility in his prior position, and so we're really fortunate that he brings that expertise with him. And so we're trying to stay current on our cleaning practices, and we've introduced some new, put some new tools in the hands of the custodians. There's definitely still room for progress, but we'll stay at it, and then even, we'll take advantage of April break to get some work done as well. And then, of course, the summer is another opportunity for us to get involved in some deep cleaning. So there's some information there for you. Dana, if you want to add anything, or if you want to just do it with questions from the committee?
Well, Benzingers also with us tonight. He was kind enough to drop by if there are any questions or if anything comes up.
So we hit the low-hanging fruit. I mean, we went through and looked for our moldy ceiling tiles and tried to address the roof leaks and such like that. We had some ductwork that were air-conditioned, you know, and when they condensate, they leak, so we insulated our ductwork, tried to clean up the mold that was on the fiber wrap of our ductwork. They've gone through with the teachers, trying to get rid of all their private possessions there that is not current anymore. We're cleaning up closets and such like that. We are going to this, next week, start cleaning, doing some ductwork cleaning, and we're going to start at Williams. That looked like the more promising one to start with. So we're going to start over there. We have done some monitoring of CO2 rates in the buildings, and it's, you know, no surprise that the CO2 levels will track at 9:00 in the morning and go on to 4:00, and then it goes down again and dilutes. They say the solution to pollution is dilution, so it's long to keep your fans moving and such like that. But having mechanical systems that are that old, we did find dampers and such that we're not working. It's just no secret over there, so we have to start addressing and coming up with a punch list of what it's going to cost to get out of there, but. Are the CO2 levels kind of similar to what we saw in the initial report, or were they? They are. I only took, I apologize, it's very boring with graphs and stuff like that. So what I did is the outside air is about 400 parts per million, you know, give or take what's going on. And as I hit some of the days, it goes up to 1,200. So I'm starting at 464 during the day, go up to 1,200 peaks at 13, 14, works its way down again through the night, and then same thing again, same day. It'll start at 9:00 on the next morning, it starts going up, excuse me. And I think that's roughly, I think we saw like 1,200, 1,300. Right. So I mean, they're shooting for 800 parts per million, that's the best we're looking for there, right there. But if you look at some of the ASR standards, you know, at the thousand level, there's still, it's, okay, we should be looking at it, but it's not, you know, let's not throw a baby out of the bathwater. You know, we have some benchmarks we should be looking at and looking around, but we identified some problems, and we're looking at them. So how do we deal with that? What? What we're going to have to do after a while, if we can't find all the parts, you know, for the systems, you know, we have on-call engineers, and we'll have to say, okay, how do I fix X? But I'm a mechanic, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an industrial hygienist, so we have to define what X is supposed to be. So again, it's only been a couple months I've sat with you people up here, so we, excuse me, we are still trying to determine what's working, what's not working, but we did find the little Unibet heaters. That's how Williams gets their fresh air, and a lot of them aren't functioning 100%. So it's stuff where we have to, we have to address. Is it both buildings that have those levels? I'll be honest, I've been concentrating on Williams. That was my higher levels over there, so I have not really moved. We've done the cleaning on both schools, we've getting ready to do, but I didn't want to throw all the money and resources to a, Williams to me seemed more of a problem. Or. Should we go over to Glenbrook later? Well, Glenbrook has its own issues, but I mean, it's, I don't want to get diluted with our work right now. I have a very small workforce, even smaller budget to get there, but I guess I'm going to say out loud, the building's not on fire. You know, there's some issues, and we got the low-hanging fruit. We can still move forward to get other things, get better on there, but I wouldn't have a problem with my kids and their schools, put it that way. Excuse me. Need to see Aaron here. Any questions?
So, I think the, just in terms of the upholstery and carpet cleaning, it is to be determined, and talking about end-of-year funds, I have great concerns about cleaning them because they're so old. Is it possible to get some information on replacement if we're going to replace that carpeting? I don't know what you could. I don't know what you can do with those auditorium chairs, but they're so old.
I agree.
And that carpeting is so old that I just would be really hesitant to clean it. I think it's, life has been lived over 100 times. And so is it, can we get information on, you know, or think about what we want to do? Does the entire chair need to be replaced?
I'd be cautious about going into replacing all the chairs. I'd have to pull a building permit for them and then I have to bring a lot of stuff to ADA compatibility. So I mean, it's, I've run into this problem before in auditoriums. The vendor didn't seem that, I expressed the same concern you do, I think the whole chair would disappear with a good vacuum cleaner over there. It didn't exceed that big of a problem over there. So today, we're doing the duct work, we're going to, again, couch issues, see what we can come up with, but we are going to look at it next week. So I agree with you, I hate to come in and have half our chairs missing, but.
What have, in your experience, what have other places done? Just waited on it until the whole?
I, my background is more mechanical and HVAC, stuff like that. And when I've had them before, it was cleaning that was the biggest issue. Like, we've had a lot of mold problems before, but it was all the potted plants that around the area. Or it was a roof leak that came down and got behind the drywall. Or it was inside some of your bigger systems per se. Your Williams and stuff like that is, it's just old. It's not really, they have small little units in there, there's not a lot in there. It is more the volume of air they need for the air exchange and we're not really getting that. The building was built in the 50s, it would not meet today's standards, but it met code when we built the building back then.
How often is that auditorium used?
I'd say, I think there's music classes in there up on the stage daily, in terms of the seating area, maybe less frequently, but they have a fair number of assemblies at the middle school level.
And I would say on the carpeting at Glenbrook, specifically in the music room, we were discussing replacing that carpet. It is original to the building. I would agree, it's, well, certainly held up well, but I don't think that cleaning is necessarily going to accomplish our goal. So we are going to explore replacement, removal and replacement with some other, some sort of sound absorption material, depending upon the cost, so.
And there's not carpeting in the auditorium at Williams?
I think there's a runner.
Just down the runways, I believe, and maybe down in front of the stage, there might be, in both.
Is that original too?
Most of it's unsealed concrete.
Yeah, I would guess it is, but I can't say for sure. It was, it used to be that orange color carpeting. I don't think that's the color in the auditoriums.
I think it faded a bit.
Last time we talked a little bit about whether we could seal, seal that concrete in the Williams auditorium.
Right. Yeah, I have not explored that option just yet. I mean, it's, just anything is possible, it's just time and money, so I want to see how much money we have to do, stuff like that. If that's a problem. So if we hit the duct work in there, I mean, everybody said there was a smell in there, so we're, let's, you know, let's discuss it. We're going after the duct work is in there. And the second priority or was looking at the chairs. You know, if we do a deep cleaning of concrete, we can see what we come up with. So it's kind of a low-hanging fruit, we see what we can get, that's what we're discussing.
So Longo's the company that's coming to clean on April 18?
Correct. April 19, something like this.
Okay.
What is that cleaning, where is that?
It says Longo's coming on April 18 to clean the cabin.
Oh, on Page 1.
So is that a cleaning company?
Actually, they do duct work. I've used them already at the fire station, did a great job over there.
So it's not the guy from town, is it?
Pardon?
It's not the guy from town?
I don't know if he's local. I think he's a local gentleman, I'm not sure he is from town or not, I don't know. But did a great job at the fire station.
Yeah, well, there's a good builder in town, that's Longo.
We're not having him clean then, the carpet.
The duct work is definitely happening and we're going to review the chairs while he's there.
Okay, but he won't be doing that.
We're going to look at them. If we take, I have the same, same concern you do, I'm not going to ruin your chairs, but we'll look at them.
Well, it's not so much, I mean, it's really, if they disintegrate, they disintegrate. It's everything that's going to be blown into the air that I worry about?
They have a van that's going to be parked out and go, gone outside.
So all of it is sucked at the same time?
Through a hose that goes outside, not in the building.
So the worst case is we just watched the upholstery.
Correct, right. You have clean springs.
I mean, my feeling, and I'm not an expert in this, but when you have an odor and you have carpeting and cushions that are 40, 60 years old, I mean, plus, I mean, that's your target, that's one of your targets, but I, with it that old, I just would not clean it. So the question is, what do we do about this auditorium when it's expensive, we're not looking, we don't know what we're doing, we're in limbo with the middle schools? What do we do about those seats? Because that upholstery on those seats has got to be, you know.
My impression of the auditorium was the floor, I felt like it was the floors, actually.
When you have upholstery.
Felt like it was moisture coming up through the concrete.
Oh.
Because when you have that unsealed porous kind of.
Dry. I mean, that kind of stuff does ultimately dry if you've got it coming up and, I mean, unless you'll see the moisture, and I don't know, I haven't looked at it, but when you have upholstery that is that old and gross, I mean, that's your smell. I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not an expert, but.
That was just my impression of it.
Yeah.
It was, I noticed the floors.
I think my thought would be that if there is something that we can do that is inexpensive, that won't create residual problems for us and that will, you know, create it, make it a safe place, then we'll do it. If it's something more involved, we'd have to come back to you as a committee, you know, so I think we'll have some better.
I'd like to get the low-hanging fruit. Let's get the duct work, let's clean the floors and, you know, see what we can do, if we can do the chairs, and come back and have everybody come over and take a walk through, see what you think, you know?
Okay.
You know, it's your building, so you tell me what you want to do.
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, I think we said this at the last meeting, but I think this is such a great start and I really appreciate all the time that went into this and it's very reflective of Mr. Benziger's, you know, investigation. So I think it's worked really nicely. What I'm thinking about is sort of the long-range planning for it because it's not the kind of thing we can knock out in a few months. It's something that's going to be, something we're trying to stay on top of.
Correct.
For many years. And as a committee, what we really need is a plan, sort of what, I think it would be really helpful to get an idea from administration about a plan for the summer and then a plan for next year and what does the school committee need to do in terms of our communication with the town? We really haven't started that in any sort of meaningful way, in-depth communication with the town. So I think if we can aim for that, you know, getting those things, sort of what do we want to target this summer, what do we want to target next year, and what are we thinking will be, you know, something that we'll have to work with the town on? Because it's very confusing with the charter and, you know, who does what and that.
So we're starting, we're still doing our, grabbing our information, doing our cleaning. And I mean, they did a great job during, was it February vacation? They went through and they cleaned the lights and everything else like that. They cleaned and replaced ceiling tiles and threw a bunch of old papers out and so they, they did some general housekeeping with it.
Yeah, that's great.
But we're still going to get a little better.
Yeah.
And so now we start some of our mechanical systems, so we'll move forward.
Okay. And you mentioned at the beginning about the vacuuming. The cleaning methods that I was interested in were the HEPA vacs and the wet dusting in the schools, like sort of trying to integrate those practices into our culture in a way that it's sort of what we do over time. Is that, did you say that the backpack vacuum?
So we're going with new, we're going with new custodians, right? We hired a couple of new custodians and what we're trying to do is say, here's our standard. So there's a training session coming up on different cleaning methods that go on, and backpack vacuum cleaner and using HEPA vac.
You're looking into one that you think is good?
Correct. So we do use HEPA filters now, our regular vacuum cleaners, we have them, but these are just taking more square footage and such like that. So we're trying to, trying to train them. There's, I'm not a professional custodian, so there's stuff I don't know about it.
Yeah, Stephanie.
I would feel, I know, in terms of cleaning the upholstery, I think we can have these people come out anytime. I would feel more comfortable if we took a sample. I know one of the chairs is broken. I'd like to take a sample of that chair and I'd like to take a sample of the rug and I'd like to send it out for, to a lab for assessment on the mold because I would just feel more comfortable before we disrupt that. I think we can have them come back anytime.
I agree with you.
I was thinking just get rid of the rug, it's just a runner.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, to me, it's, why test it? We know it's old and dirty.
Yeah. And then the, I think the chairs, it's worth doing because they're so old. And then if it comes down to the fact that, you know, whatever comes back, it may just be that we have to get rid of the chairs and not use the chairs in that auditorium if they're, I mean, they're so, I mean, you, I've all seen the chairs, they're old, that upholstery is old. If you're having kids sit in them and it's like poof, and everything that's in there over the years. So I would like, I would feel more comfortable knowing a little bit more about what.
We'll sample them before we try it. We'll pull a couple of chairs out and see what happens.
Yeah, and you can, you can just send that to a lab. It's very cheap. I think I, when I've sent samples to labs and Barbara would know that and she would know where to send it.
Okay, we'll try.
I want to say it's, it's under 50, maybe it's $30 or so for a sample to send it out to a lab.
We deal with the lab and East Long Meadow, I think the name is ATC or whatever.
Yeah.
So we'll deal, we'll see what they say.
Okay.
But outside of that, the custodians are doing a heck of a job and their teachers are really pitching in, getting their closets and trying to get rid of the stuff they've been cherishing for how many years and they're cleaning up stuff, so. And the mechanical, we are finding a lot of problems, but again, we're finding them, you know, we're looking for.
That's great, yeah. Knowledge is power, even though it might not be great knowledge.
It's, you know.
What are you thinking, or where have we gone on the air conditioning units at Williams? Because we talked about that last time and it's.
Williams, I mean, they're window air conditioners and.
Yep.
They're, they're at the point, they're so small, it's not really worth the labor to put into them. And I looked and I scoured all their stuff. We had another engineering firm look at the buildings before my time here and, and I can't find it in writing, so I apologize and I shouldn't say it out loud, but I'm going to. When they were dealing with our custodians, they said just clean the front of the evaporator. Make sure it's clean, your filters are clean, and clean your evaporator clean. And that's all even done, they do it every summer, they clean the front. Do I think there could be dust and mold or dust in the back? There's dust every place. Do I think it's worth, you know, throwing them all away? I'm not positive about that, I don't think so. The outside of the air conditioner, which is outside and gets all the pollen and stuff like that, again, it's outside, that's a condensing unit, the condensing coils. They get very dirty, but it's outside, that air does not come into the building. There's two, there's a separate wall. As far as fresh air coming from a window air conditioner, you probably get a little damper about this big. You know, you probably see it in your house when you cleaned it. There's hardly any air coming through that thing. It recycles most of the air that's in the building there. So yes, there could be dirt on the coils, they're cleaning the front of the coil. Is it worth taking apart a window air conditioner for the labor it's going to do? No. In my past experience, I would just throw them away when they stop working. It's not, they're too small to service, it's not worth our time. There's a, there's a value of keeping, they're big systems running, keeping them peak efficiencies. These are small window air conditioners. And I'm looking at everybody here, how many people here have taken their window air conditioners at their home apart and cleaned it? So I mean, it's nice to clean the world, I don't think this is a big problem. That's my opinion, so.
Are there any? Sorry, Liz, yeah?
Sorry, I was there tonight. Are there any ones that are really old and maybe that they could be, we could get a few new ones? You know, because those were years and years.
That's a fair question. I don't know. I'll have to get an inventory, I don't know, I think they are relatively new, you know.
I know that most of them are, but I think there are a few really old ones and maybe it would help to replace those.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we don't have the skill sets to work on them and it's, it's not worth hiring a contractor to fix them.
No.
So it's for the size of them.
And they're cheaper now, right?
Unfortunately, we are a throwaway world. Except we would recycle, reclaim.
Hey, Dan, while we have you here, we talked about some summer work, but we know that your facilities team's going to be busy with some boiler projects this summer, is that, I just want everybody to know.
If the taxpayers approve it, we're going to put a brand-new boiler in Center School, we're putting a new boiler in Blueberry. Before my time, the sprinkler systems in Blueberry and Wolf Swamp have frozen repetitively. So I contacted a couple of engineers, we're going to move the sprinkler systems inboard about nine feet and put, you know, a new run of sprinklers in there, should save us, I mean, we've flooded the buildings a few times. So that's our game plan for the summer, for the schools anyways. So it'd be a lot of collateral damage here, now's the chance to probably get some new ceilings when we're done out of it, they're just two-by-two, two-by-four, so might get some clean ceilings at the time.
Yeah.
Thanks for coordinating. I know that, I know that's a fair amount of work just to line up those projects and hopefully, hopefully they're approved at town meeting.
As Stephanie was saying, I think sampling and getting samples is probably the way to go and in terms of effort, it probably makes sense to do some sampling, especially at Williams because there's been so much anecdotal discussion in town among parents about mold at Williams and smells at Williams and health issues there that I think, you know, with Walter Port, the committee sort of thought, all right, we'll do an initial sort of look, which is great, and then you sort of took the baton and been doing a great job. And I think it's really incumbent upon us now to decide, you know, what kind of sampling do we want to do in order to hone in on where, you know, what areas need the most attention? And it might help to narrow the focus a little bit.
Excuse me.
So, you know, that would be some minor funding, I don't think it would be excessive. I think it could go on one of our agendas if you could give us an idea of cost.
Okay. So what we are trying to, tracking also is temperature and what we've been finding out is some of your rooms are kind of warm. It's bad as having, you know, high CO2 level, you're getting low because you're tired, the temperature's up there. So it's prompting us to replace more valves or at least coming up with a plan to replace valves or controls, but it is an old building. But it gives, it gives us a lot of analytical data just saying, here's the problem or here's our findings, how do we get there? So it's, you know, it's an old building, it's not a bad building, it's just getting old. I mean, the system's at the point.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it's, but it's a balance point, how much money you put into it, but they're.
No, and I'm thinking out loud too, because when we did this report, like you said, it's a, it's a lot of things, it's a lot to think of, a lot to think about and a lot to address. But I think that the consistent factor has been Williams mold, Williams, is that some, how can we get more information? And for me, because that's what I hear so much from parents, and I'm not saying that's the worst issue.
No, understood.
I'm just saying that it's a concern, it's on parents' minds. I think we really need to look at which areas maybe, like you said, it's an old building, there isn't a whole lot we can do, but if we identify the areas that maybe have higher levels, you know, there's certain things that we can do to help mitigate it so kids aren't, kids and staff aren't feeling those symptoms.
So the principal over there is calling a couple of times this winter and last week saying the same area, we have a problem with a leaky skylight. They couldn't repair it, they don't make it anymore. We're just getting rid of the skylight, we'll put another source of light there, but we will be sealing the whole area, removing the wet sheet rock and putting the ceiling tiles on that area. So your, your principals, your teachers and custodians over there are looking for it. So they brought to our attention, we found the source of the leak, we're getting rid of the leak, now we have to fix the area around it. But, and that's what you're talking about, they want to know what's happening over there and they're, they're taking it very serious over there. They're looking, I have a water. Soon as we find a water leak, we come in, see what we can do.
Yeah, if someone could come back to us with sort of a general idea of how much sampling would be for at least, you know, for both buildings or to focus on one building at a time so we can move, because that was, I think, and the committee needs to weigh in on whether we want to do that or not. Stephanie?
So you work with CTA in East Long Meadow?
ATC.
ATC.
ATC, so not contest analytical lab?
I'm going to say, I am not positive, but I didn't, I think it's ATC, but it's a contest, it's a lab over there, they did all their lead and water testing.
So probably CTA then?
Pardon?
Maybe CTA, which is contest.
Could be, yes.
Okay. So I don't, so you don't work with them, that, you don't use them? I was just wondering because they're ones who could kind of guide that a little bit?
The answer, what I was going to do is, we have RDK, is our mechanical engineers on call. And the other one's doing our boilers and Rybeck's doing our fire sprinklers. I can just pick the brain and see what's going on. We are doing our samplings. We have ten monitors going in there, so that'll give us a pretty good target. I can download that. You can look at it. It's, you know, it'll be public knowledge, you know, it's there. We'll tell you what rooms have the high levels, have the high temperatures. And you can make your decisions from there, which we want to go with it.
I think we're looking at specific samplings, well, I'm looking at specific samplings of the cushions. So we could go something very basic, take that, pluck it, and then just send it to the lab ourselves. Or I didn't know if you had a relationship with CTA and I don't know.
So you're focusing for mold is what you're looking for?
Yeah, basic, yes.
Okay.
For the seats.
And I want to do more general testing in, in Williams.
So this might be a question more for Walt. But with, with mold, if we're testing in areas, wouldn't we be looking for areas that might have water? Or is it just, because everything I've seen at least is, it's more, like the cushions, I just don't know if they were wet. To check for mold? I mean, they might have other things in it, but I don't know if that's true or not. I guess that's what I'm asking.
Walt, is he?
Yeah, I, yeah, just because nobody at home will be able to hear you unless you speak.
I can speak up.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out like where, if we're going to test, where are we going to do it? Because normally you do it where the water is.
Well, I think you can test, well, Walt will speak to it.
How are you? Nice.
Good, Walt.
Very nice. Everything I've heard, it sounds great.
Sounds wonderful. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so moisture is the key, but it can be direct wetting or it can be high relative humidity. And then dew point, you know. The other thing is, is with, I don't remember the seats exactly, but this, it's a fabric seat. Is that correct in the auditorium?
Yes, it's like a fuzzy fabric.
So we also have the human body. Yeah, I don't know if you've ever, you know, you've ever felt either your clothing or something that you've been against for a period of time, you've actually caused some moisture to be emitted to that. And then there's also an issue with dust mites, you know, which is another concern, okay, where there's human skin cells, okay? So dust mites, dust mite feces is another, in fact, more people statistically are allergic to dust mite feces than to mold, okay? So what might be good, if you decide that you want to do that, would be maybe to take some samples from the fabric portion of those, you know, very inexpensively. And, and, and see what we're, what we're working with, you know? And maybe do a couple, because there's, I don't know how they sit in there, but not, the place isn't completely full all the time, you know? So maybe they're down front or they're in the back or whatever, but get an average.
So we would test for mold and other things.
Yeah, yeah. And it's possible the mold can be created and can grow and then can just lie dormant, waiting for more moisture, you know? So it could be a number of different, different things there. And then the concern with the concrete that I mentioned in my report in the, there is that, again, it's, it's where people are, humans, you know? And so we have other sorts of things going on there, you know, we have the human skin cells, but also occasionally there, there may be, you know, other interactions with either our feet or even, you know, other sort of things that happen that go on. You know, spilled water or something, drinks or something, even though they're not allowed in there. But, but what happens is in the concrete is a semi-porous material, so even though it appears to be inert and solid on the surface, you know, it absorbs things, okay? And there could be some odors and things that are, that are coming from that. And if that was cleaned and then sealed, so that it would be like this tabletop, then it would be easier to, to keep it clean. And, and to clean it, you know, over time.
So because it's, I just want to make sure I'm remembering what you said correctly. It's hard to remember all the details. But that, your impression was that is rock and unsealed concrete in the.
At least not in the last couple decades. I don't know that it's ever been sealed.
And that's a really low-cost thing to do, right? To just clean and seal that.
Clean it. Yeah, and just leave it concrete, you know, but just clean it very well.
Yeah.
And seal it.
Yeah.
Because it, it doesn't appear to be porous like, you know, as porous as a carpeting or something like that, but it is a porous material.
Yeah.
And it's so large amount that, you know, it's important to do that, so.
Russ?
So are we comfortable just leaving it to them to figure out? I mean, obviously Stephanie, like the upholstery checked. And then they could come back to us at some point with what else should be, what else they think we should test.
And I think, and maybe Walt knows, when you send out a sample, I can't remember when I did it. It gives you a whole panel. You don't necessarily have to, to have to specify. The time when I had sent it out, I was, I was looking specifically for mold and I got a whole panel of what they found. But I can't remember if you had to specify specifically.
If you sample for particulate matter, you're going to get anything that's an object, a particle. So it would be all the molds, human skin cells, insect parts, plant parts, pollen, fibers, both man-made and natural fibers, hair, you know, this kind of thing with all. They, they should identify all those things and the amounts.
Do you have a lab to, to recommend to us to do?
Well, I think ATC is, is the premier environmental company. And whether they actually do the lab work themselves, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm sure.
Yeah, contest, I think, is, was the precursor. And I think they're gone now. I think contest is gone, but I think. I use EMSL and I did for this, two samples that I took, the very, just the only two that I took. But there's a number of labs around. There's, there's two labs in Connecticut that are very good, Northeast Labs and, in Berlin. And ESIS or Environmental Health Labs in Cromwell. They're very close. And there may be other labs in the area that do this kind of work. Dust mites, if you're actually going to test with dust mites, usually that's done in a different way. It's done with a vacuum filter. So for example, you would put a particular filter with a particular pore size on a vacuum cleaner, even one of the ones that the janitors use. And you would vacuum, you know, the chair.
Yeah.
And then send that in and they would tell you what came out of that.
I'm sure we can assume at this point, there's tons of dust mites.
In those chairs. That's why I think of the chair fabric as being a dust mite issue and the concrete as being a moisture mold issue, Liz.
Just a question about the, does the auditorium, does all the air in the whole school filter throughout the school? Like is the same air in the auditorium also in the, in the classrooms?
What happened in the classrooms, there is a unit here, it's under the windows, and it brings in fresh air. In each classroom, there's an exhaust fan and it takes that air out and it's gone out. So it's not recycled in that room.
Right.
So.
That's at Williams and then Glenbrook.
Glenbrook, you have the air.
It's a duct system.
I'm just wondering, because from people that I know who said their kids are sick, it's not one particular area. They're sick from, or that they're not feeling good from.
Just generally.
I feel like it's going to be hard to pinpoint something like it's that carpet or whatever.
Right. And that's exactly why I think that choosing a number of samplings throughout the building will give us an idea of potential areas that need to be addressed. I agree with what you're saying.
Well, he's identified the fact that they're working on the mechanical systems.
Yeah.
So if you have an area that's, that's taken care of by one mechanical system, okay? So then you're going through and you're cleaning that, checking the filtration, you know, all that, right? Then you have other areas where there's maybe individual rooms that are mechanically heated, okay? And then maybe some other larger areas, you know, like the auditorium has one big.
Correct.
System, all right? So there's that, and that's a way to filter the air and things that get into the air and keep it, and also maybe to entrain fresh air, you know? We figure out how to do, if you can do that. But as far as the sources, there's also sources that are produced in each location, okay? So if a source is produced in, in one location, like in the auditorium, meaning, you know, mold or dust mites or bacteria or.
It gets carried throughout.
Right, it can get carried outside, but it also goes through that one system. And if that system is clean, then that's very helpful. So you do source reduction, fresh air exchange and filtration.
Correct.
You know, and, and that's very helpful.
My, my point is that, you know, if a kid goes in the auditorium and says, like, I feel sick afterwards. But if, if they're just generally not feeling well, then.
But the other thing that's going to happen right now in Williams, I'm just going to pick on Williams.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
There's no way for you to say in the building over there. So what's going to happen, your mold is going to be equal to what's outside right now. Say there's no leaks and there's all, you know, parts per million of mold, because everybody's opening their classroom windows right now.
Right.
It's all coming through. So it's not coming through the filters. It's just coming through the screens. So all the air is coming in that way. It's not filtered, you know, you have a, a very old system inside. It made code back then. Right now it doesn't.
You're talking about outdoor air in the building, but I think the, there's a big, isn't there a big health difference? I'm not an expert in this area, between outdoor mold and indoor mold. I, my understanding was that the indoor mold that we see, like that black mold is more of a concern.
The parts, if you have a healthy building and there's 500 parts per million, or I'm saying this wrong, Walt, tell me.
That's right.
But what should be the same inside?
Yeah, yeah.
You're going to have mold in your building. It's just, you know, you might be allergic to this difference up. But if I have something at 500 outside, they got 3,000 inside, well, then there's a smoking gun. We have to go find what the source is.
And then the species too, you know, if there are, for example, some of the molds only, you know, would only occur indoors on, on wet drywall, damp drywall. You know, some of the molds, right? And you wouldn't find that outside.
Right.
The other thing that's.
And is there a difference on, of the impact of that on students and staff?
It, in the, in the clinical information, it says, people are fairly agreed, there's agreement, that the molds that occur in, in a, an artificial or man-made environment, okay, indoors.
Yeah.
Are more difficult for, for most people. And the reason is, I believe, people point to evolution. And they say, you know, the outdoor molds, we, our ancestors may have been more aware of and accustomed to. And some of the indoor molds really are very, are more esoteric, because they're, for example, the drywall, if you don't mind if I use that example. Drywall is, is processed cellulose material, because it's paper, okay, so paper. And so many times older buildings, they didn't have this in the older days. There was plaster, there was on lath or solid wood materials, natural materials. Wool, carpeting and this kind of thing, you know, concrete, cement. And so when you have drywall, then we get, for example, the most famous mold, the black mold that everybody talks about is stackebotrys, okay? Stackebotrys occurs on wet drywall and it does not grow, it'd like to grow on anything else, because it likes cellulose material low in nitrogen. Well, the only way you get cellulose material low in nitrogen, solid wood has a lot of nitrogen, is processing it and making paper. So I don't find it in any old Victorian buildings where there's plaster, only in dry, buildings with drywall, which is a more modern product. It's sort of like processed food, processed building materials kind of thing. And that's why we, we find it inside.
One of the difficulties here is, I think part of the reason we're getting hung up is, I think we're, we're trying to identify a solution, but what's the problem, right? So, you know, we're, we're coming up with solutions for what problem? And understanding that, we have facilities, people and nurses and administrators and teachers that, you know, work in collaboration to identify any problems and, you know, we're tracking student attendance and we're tracking illnesses. And so, you know, I don't, I don't want to, you know, we're desperately in search of a solution, but I'm not sure we know what the problem is. And I think we need to trust the facilities team to identify what types of studies need to be done. To identify, to work with outside providers, industrial hygienists, to work with the custodial team, to work with the administrators, to make sure that we're addressing these problems as best we can. And then if we hit a roadblock in doing that, that's when we come back to the committee and say, you know, we need a bigger solution to a problem that we've identified. And some, you know, that's what involves, you know, sometimes those are capital issues or building system issues that, and where we need the support and help of the school committee. But, I mean, I want to assure you that if a, if we have a, a family, if there's a child with a medical need, you know, our job is to understand what's, what's the medical need, to work really hard to see if there's some environmental trigger. And then if there is some environmental trigger, that we, you know, we, we deal with that. We put some solution in place. So, you know, I think we just, there is, you know, this is ongoing. And I think Dan has a strong sense of what the committee's concerns are. He has a strong sense of what the administrator's concerns are. And I think they'll have to work with the systems engineers, the industrial hygienists. Maybe we tap into Walt's expertise to kind of figure out what needs additional study and what solutions can we come up with to the problems that we identify. But let's, let's identify what, you know, what problems we're experiencing first.
I think this, this discussion though, you know, I, I think it's really helpful to bring us together every so often and to update. And it's really helpful for us to ask questions, because this has been such a huge problem for so long. And I feel a very strong sense of obligation to my community to, to, to make sure I understand what's going on. So this is really about understanding and the committee understanding. And, you know, continuing our partnership of working together.
Correct.
And, you know, I think it's gone great so far. And in terms of process, I would say let's focus on working as a team and not sort of, you know, I don't think anyone wants to feel like this is your, you know, that's your job, that's your. I, I love the fact that we started on, as, you know, on this project as a team. Dan's come, Walt's participated, the school committee's asking questions. These are questions that parents want, you know, answered, which is why school committee members are asking them. They're critical, critical questions. And you get to be in the hot seat. You're the lucky winner of that. But again, this is all part of an important process towards, you know, figuring out what to do and how to do it. Stephanie? I think it's all been very helpful. I think that the plan and how it's executed is great, the mechanics. My hangup is.
The seats.
Is the seats and the, and the rugs. And ideally, what I would do is rip up the rug and get rid of the seats and have the kids sit on the floor until we have money to do anything else. I mean, I think it's that gross. But in, you know, and so my concern is I, I don't want them cleaned. I really, in my gut, it, it just screams no. And so I would really like to have them, because, you know, you can have Longo or you can have anyone come in there and they're going to say, we can clean it and maybe it falls apart. But until, they're so old, until, I, I just would not feel comfortable doing that until we get the sample and a panel and see what those seats are. We have no idea what even material. They're so old.
Also so we're not releasing more into the air.
I, I understand it sucked, but then we're talking about, it is wet. Is it going to dry? Are we going to create more of a problem? So, you know, my top thing would be to get rid of it all, but in lieu of that, I would say sample before we do anything else. And I think everything else sounds good.
Can we get a price on just, you said you didn't want to get rid of the seats, but can we get a price on putting something on the seats?
The Hampton County.
Just the fabric, you know, getting rid of just.
Hampton County House of Correction has their own chair remodeling thing right there. So maybe we can just, you know.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah, they did the pool, but we'll keep that in our, in our mind's eye as we move forward.
They don't do a bad job, so if you did a couple rows at a time, it wouldn't really impact your school.
That would be phenomenal.
It's still, there's, there's a cost to it. Let me see what's going to cost us, but.
But if you can let us know, then we can do our thing and help, you know, this is all, like I said, it's all about collaboration.
All right, what's that going to do for you?
Let us know what we can do to help make this, these things work.
Okay.
And Walt, can you remind me just what you had said about the air conditioning units? Is that something that's like a big glaring kind of elephant thing or is that something that sort of?
I, I heard.
Falls under the, I don't know.
I heard what you said about that.
Yeah.
And the only thing I would suggest, and I just very humbly, I would suggest, if you don't mind, have, maybe take one of the units and, and have one of your guys just put it on a table and take it apart. Okay, now I've, I've taken them apart, okay? And, and I heard, and you're absolutely right. There's, there's the screen in the front, right? Then there's the, what we call the coil, right, which is cold, right? And it's pulling it through the screen, which is not great filtration. We know that. And then there's the, the coil, which is cold, right, because the freon is expanded in there. The air goes through there and is cooled, but then it goes through this sort of, this sort of curved, you know, area and comes out, all right? That's where I have seen mold. If I look in with a flashlight, I see it on that, that sort of curved, which is either metal or plastic. But, and the reason is, is because the dust, it gets on the coil too. You're absolutely right. And it would be on this side of the coil, because that would be the filter side, right? And so that needs to be cleaned.
But it's not going through the coil?
Well, it may, it may. And so, so here's the point. And, and if it came back and you said, oh, are you kidding? That was $300. The unit's worth five, you know? But if a, if a guy took those bolts apart and took that big metal box, which is on the outside, and slid it off of that, just slid it apart and looked in and saw that they could actually clean inside there and it happened pretty quick, then that would be a way to extend the life of those things. Because when it's cold, you know, then the moisture collects, because the filter isn't great, then the particles go in. It's not eating the metal, it's not eating the plastic, the mold, right? But it's those particles.
Right.
So if, if you could try that, you know, and just see what happens, you know? One, one of your good people that's mechanically inclined and then say, you know, what did that cost, you know? And see if that's helpful and if it can't be done. Now there is a fan, probably a squirrel cage fan.
Correct.
I think. And so that's got a lot of little parts to it. I understand that. But, but if, if, let's say a person could get it down to where somebody could do it in two hours, then.
I, I've done it myself.
Oh, have you? Oh, you're taking it apart, taking it apart? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then you know, then you know what's necessary.
Yeah.
And you don't feel that that's, that's worthwhile?
Not, not that size units. I really don't.
All right, okay.
Anything else?
There's also split, mini splits, you know.
Well, we're thinking about that.
Expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to, you know, keep talking about it and.
Yep, just conversations, but.
Yeah, it's great and learning about air conditioning units. But, you know, maybe we can explore that and see. Because if there's something in there that's shooting it out, Williams is so interesting because it's divided. It's not like Glenbrook where it has that duct system.
Correct.
So it's so each classroom has the univent and the air conditioning unit, right? And then of course we have the roof and all that other stuff that's hugely almost untouchable at this.
untouchable at this point for us. But, you know, continuing to look at those things and what we can do, so.
And I just want to say to Marty's question, one of the things you've mentioned is that you're looking at the CO2. And you, you know where you want to be with the CO2. You want to be between six and eight hundred, let's say.
Well, yes.
If you can.
Correct, if you can.
And, and the mold, you know that you, if there is mold, and you could take samples every once in a while, you want the molds to be similar or equal to outside or less.
Right.
And the same types, right? So those are, those are some ways, Marty, of looking and having a threshold, you know, that, that he's looking for. And then you have this sort of general ongoing things of cleaning. And of course, it sounds like they greatly improved the cleaning effort
Yeah, I see.
And energy and using the backpack hepa filters and things like that. So there are some things where there's actually quantifiable thresholds that you can meet and be looking at, you know, so.
We just bought those machines, right? The, what are they called?
Data monitors.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, they're not all in. So when we get done, we'll be able to show you through your building where you are, which, I mean, and it's not just,
That's great.
CO2, we're looking at temperature and humidity and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, the one, the one unit, yeah.
Right.
That was a good, good purchase.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Thank you, Walt. Thank you so much. Really appreciate both of you
No problem.
Giving us your evening, valuable evening time. We have administrative reports and Dr. O'Shea, you're up next.
Uh, so my, my, most of my comments will be reserved for the mid-cycle review. I'll just say that we're looking forward to town meeting and hopefully the approval of the town budget and with that, the school budget. And for anyone watching at home, there's some information posted on the district website on the FY18 school budget and some of the investments that we're able to make with the, with that FY18 budget. We're excited about some of the improvements that will come out of that. And also we had some of the sort of enrollment related reductions at Williams Middle School and I've had a couple of parents ask me about that recently and there is an explanation in the, in the slide deck that can be found online. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I think the committee had some expectations that we maintain reasonable class sizes and, and class sizes that are equitable across our two middle schools and I'm, I'm confident that we will achieve that with the FY18 budget. And though they are, you know, reductions and really some, some valuable members of our learning community, at the end of the day, our job is to ensure that we've got licensed, highly qualified people in place and we'll, we'll do that for next year. And still some decisions to make about staffing. None have been made, but after town meeting, we will kind of start to bring that staffing picture together with more clarity, so.
Thank you. Michelle, do you have anything tonight?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to bring up some dates that are coming up. So over April break, there'll be two international trips. The first one is Lyrix, which is the honors choir at Longman High School from grades nine to 12. They'll be going to Italy. And the second trip is the London and England trip, uh, the England and Ireland trip, sorry. And so they'll be leaving, both trips will be leaving this Sunday.
Great.
And then High Meadows for the seniors will be on April 27th. Graduation will be June 11th. And then there's also a music concert coming up on the 18th of May.
Thank you. We have a report, a couple of reports, I believe, Energy Task Force, Liz, do you have?
Yeah, just quick. So we met last night and we're going to, our goals that we, we drafted are in, gonna go to finance sub. But in those goals, there's a section about how we, the town will give us $2,000 towards some sort of energy project at the school. So we should talk about that sometime and, or the finance subcommittee should talk about some time and where that money should go. And secondly, I brought up solar panels, because we talked about that last time. And, because that's also in this school's report. And, and we were just talking about how, you know, we've always said it's so difficult to get something going, especially because the, you know, it needs to go through the town. And me and Angelina said, oh, actually Stephen said that it's up to the schools because you guys have the energy, you pay for your energy costs. So you don't, it's not part of the town budget, it's like the schools. So I thought that was interesting because that means that we can, you know, try to go out to bid and look into solar and stuff now that that decision has been made, but.
So are you, is that on the agenda for the finance sub to, to talk about a possible proposal?
Um, no, but I just got that
Okay.
Information last night, so.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize it's that many times.
Liz and I met last week.
Yeah.
And we did briefly talk about solar panels. I think I would want to explore this a little bit more with Stephen. I mean, we don't pay for replacement of boilers. I mean, the town owns and is responsible for the maintenance of the building, so I think we'd want to have a more thorough dialogue with the town on what process. And I don't necessarily know that it should be done in isolation. I think if the, if the town is looking at solar opportunities, it should be done on a holistic town and school perspective, so.
Right. And they are because of the DPW site
Yes.
On a cap and put solar panels down there, so.
So I'm happy to have a conversation with Stephen before bringing something to finance sub in regards to the solar.
Right.
We were planning on bringing the goals specifically because there were some financial implications involved in them to the next finance sub meeting.
But they would be bidding on us.
Would have to be a bid, some sort of bid process through the town, absolutely. There's multiple ways.
Maybe you'd say we would pay for it. Maybe that's,
Oh, maybe.
I think that might be the,
So I'll be happy to follow up with, and have a conversation with Stephen.
So I don't know if that's something that we want to try to talk to the select board about together as two committees at some point.
Are we talking about panels on the roofs or we don't really have any land per se that we could use?
Yeah. Panels on, I mean, the high schools built that they could have solar panels.
And the parking lot.
And the parking lot. We could maybe do something there. So if the town is going, they're putting on RFP for their solar panels down at the DPW.
Yeah.
Maybe they could put it in for the other parts of the town, the schools.
I guess I'm just not sure where to go from here in terms of coordinating. How does it?
I think an initial discussion with Stephen might be
It's confusing.
The right step first, just to see,
You touching the,
Yeah.
Okay.
But there, there's energy consultants that you can contract with that will come out and assess and tell you where you could put them and how much it would cost roughly. And then you draft a bid based on that report, basically.
Right. And they're using one for the, down there, so.
For the DPW.
So you would think we could, you could say a person.
Picky back on it, basically.
Okay. Well, loop me into the conversation so that I can do whatever I can, you know, I mean, it just, it sounds like we have to communicate with them about it.
Yeah.
And then if we have to meet, we can meet? Or if we need to send a proposal to the select board? You know, whatever, whatever you guys think. Is there a SEAL report?
So, um,
Thanks, Liz.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
I am not their representative for SEAL, but I am there. So I thought I could at least tell you.
Yes, you are.
Thank you. What's going on? So SEAL met on April 4th. Um, and during that meeting, the special ed supervisors from the preschool and elementary spoke. So at this point in the year, all of the special ed supervisors have spoken at a SEAL meeting from elementary, middle and high school. There was talk about a fall workshop on transition planning for 18 to 22-year-olds. Rights and responsibilities presentation was given last month by the Federation for Children with Special Needs and that was met well. I went to it, it was very well done. SEAL will have a presence at Long Meadow Days again. There'll be a raffle. Last year's profits went to buy sensory wobble cushions for stores library. I don't know what this year's will go towards, but SEAL will have a booth there. And the next meeting will be May 2nd.
Great. Thank you for reporting on that for us tonight. Next we have the finance subcommittee. And it looks like we do not have any motions tonight, just some information. Because the committee did meet on March 21st.
Yes, we did meet on March 21st and included in your packet are three different financial reports. They all are just informational in nature. Some of them date back to mid-March or early March based on when they were presented to finance sub. So the first is a year-to-date budget report through March 16th. It captures actual activity and then I tried to attempt to project anticipated activity through June 30th, then giving us a sense of where we see the budget finishing the fiscal year. Most certainly would be subject to change as some of the, some of the information is just based on trends and once actual expenditures are processed, we'll, we'll update it. I'll probably bring finance sub an updated report in early May. The second document is a revolving account report, again, just showing activities in our special revenue accounts, showing revenue we received to date, expenses that have been incurred and any obligations or encumbrances that are currently recorded in the general ledger. I also tried to project out where I anticipate the fund balance to be for June 30th for the various accounts that we have. And then finally is a, is a, it's, I titled it, it's called the benchmarking data, which kind of takes various aspects of the district, both financial and performance, academic performance, and compare it to both our local,
You got it all on one page.
It's, it's very small document, writing, but in order to try to keep it on one page, I really had to squeeze it in, so.
I'm impressed.
So it compares Long Meadow to our local communities and to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, our comparable districts across the state. And again, it, it is looking at both financial and some student achievement information. The only, I think, drawback with this report is that it's not consistent in terms of the year for all of the data because the state isn't necessarily consistent in terms of the year that they have the most recent information for. So some information might be as old as FY18 and other might be current, like enrollment and class size. So, so again, just informational, try to put it together every year for, for the committee and for the district.
So in terms of class size, we're, we're right on par with, looks like it's pretty, fairly consistent
Mm-hmm.
Across these communities.
Can I ask a question?
Stephanie?
So I always find this interesting with DUC and comparable districts because it changes all the time. Depending on what school you're looking at, your comp is different. So, um, these are some, these are some new towns. So how, how are they basing? I mean, I know they're a little blur, but really what is your feel for how they, I mean, because it does, it, it does change. So is it, are, are towns?
You want to hear my, what I said to finance sub?
Yes, I'd love to.
I said, we've become poorer and Eastern Mass has become wealthier. So those other towns that we used to be comparable to from an income perspective were,
But is it, is it, it's not just income though, it's number of students, it's, you know, but it's always changing. I mean, is there that much?
Well, we used to be 16th in the state as far as income, because we, at our office, we track this stuff for negotiations. Last time I checked, I think we were 40th. So there's been a huge drop.
Over how many years? Do you know?
Um, I don't know, we've been doing it quite a long time, but that's a massive drop to go that far down.
To go. But I was, there was just recently an article talking about the change in all of the towns and the number of, and the income levels going down in all of the towns and, and the new needs that are being brought to school districts. So while we drop, I think that all, you know, the majority of towns are experiencing different challenges in terms of, of needs and just changes in general. So it, it's interesting. But I always find this particularly interesting when we look at comps and they keep changing.
So what, what I found when I did those charts is that income level is the best predictor of scores. And scores are also a part of this, so when you look at, so even though they have all these different factors, at the end of the day, income drives almost everything educational. You know, so it's, it's really, so like Reading has just become, or North Reading, you know, it's wealthier compared to, to the way we used to be. It's become a wealthier town and we've just dropped dramatically because, you know, companies have left and that type of thing, so it's. But could, could I mention a couple of things about this? One thing I noticed is that the number of middle schools, the other comparables all have one school except for Reading, but Reading has 4,300 kids.
You are right. Wow.
So some of those are smaller than us, but a lot of them are pretty much the size we are, a little bigger.
Interesting.
Um, the other, the thing I noticed is in the MCAS scores, fifth grade science and seventh grade math, we're, you know, at the top or, or at the very top in most of these categories, but those two were, were lower than some of the other categories. Not only compared to the other places, but we're just lower compared to internally. We go from like 90s to 61 or 68. So there's, I think it's something we've already mentioned, we went through the scores before, but it's, it's obvious on this as well. And I guess the last thing I noticed is that most of our comparables all chose to go with Park. There's only two other ones that didn't.
Hmm.
So I don't know if that means much. I don't, I guess we'll see when MCAS 2.0 comes up, but.
They're going, what, so they're only moving to Park in some, on some subjects?
Well, Park was ELA in math.
Oh, okay.
But that's, MCAS 2.0, from what people are saying at least, it's supposed to be more similar to Park. So the question is whether these other schools that went to Park are gonna be a little, you know, ahead of the curve potentially? But who knows?
Yeah, I just find, I think I find it interesting because the towns change, so in terms of information that we get and what do we use, because the towns were different last year, now they're different. So are we, we have the comps, but then the town changes, so you do worse, you have a different, a different comp.
Yeah, I'd say, I don't think we pivot or do, you know, respond dramatically to the, it's just another set of, it's another data points that we kind of look at and, you know, there are dozens and dozens of indicators that we're looking at every year. And, yeah, the, the comps change every year and it's mostly related to the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged or your income levels. And, you know, I think tracking, for us, tracking the percentage of students that are determined to be economically disadvantaged, the number of students who are tuitioned out, the number of students who are identified as having special needs, those are all important indicators that we can look at in isolation without regard to what's happening in other districts, but it is good to look at the comps. We're in that, you know, in terms of the MCAS comparisons, we're in, you know, we're kind of in limbo along with other districts in terms of trying to identify our progress relative to other districts because everybody's all over the map in terms of implementation of, of testing expectations.
I think the internal comparison is probably more useful too, I'd agree with that.
Yeah.
But that's why the math thing concerns me because you're here, then you drop, then you go way back up again. So those are the type of things that concern me more than anything else.
I think it's tou, it's tricky too because the test is not always the same. The, you know, the group is not, in terms of how you compare it from year to year. But this also brings into, my thought is that we don't track kids once they leave high school and so we use these MCAS as the end-all, be-all in so, too many ways, I think. And I really want to, and we can talk about this next year for our goals, I really want to track these kids from when they leave, how are they doing? We talk about college prep and career prep and we have no idea really how kids are doing. So I, I think it'll help us get off of this MCAS a little bit. MCAS has its place and its purpose, but when we just focus on that and what's, you know, we're losing the bigger picture and how are these kids doing for those, the college and career? And we really don't have a good sense of that, so for next year.
That's a good point. John?
I agree with you. I'd like to know what they're doing after they leave here, but how do we find that out?
I, I think it's actually easier than you, because we're so connected now that it's so easy to, in, in many ways, to stay in touch and find out where these kids are going and what they're doing.
Well, you get into privacy concerns.
Yeah, well, so it.
If they don't want to release the information, and I'm just.
Right. There's ways to do it, yeah, and, and have it away from their name and, yeah, you wouldn't need that information.
Well, it would be helpful for it to be a uniform process, then they could make some comparison. But there are certain colleges that aren't going to reveal.
No, we don't, I, we can talk about how we would do it, but it wouldn't be by the college, it would be by the individual in gathering follow-up data. Some schools already do it.
I was just going to ask you, are you familiar with?
Well, there was one, when I watched the movie Beyond Measure, there was a school in the Berkshire who was talking about their five-year-out data. And I was like, oh, we don't really have that.
Okay.
So.
So that's interesting.
Yep.
I just wanted to add, I'm just realizing you only received one page of the benchmarking data. There's a second page that does it to the local districts, all of our surrounding communities and the state figures, so.
Is it as small as this one?
It's exactly the same, just some different titles across the top. So it's, it was a separate tab on the bottom. There are two tabs on the spreadsheet. So we'll get it out to you tomorrow.
We'll call you.
Yeah, fine, give me a call.
It's not online, we'll text you.
I just took it and made a printout, yeah, and I realized it was more than one.
But we'll get it out to you tomorrow.
This is helpful though, really helpful, and, and looking at that too.
And when it's online, you can hit the plus and zoom it out.
A little easier to read.
Yeah.
I prefer to read on paper, but yeah, in this instance, I didn't get you the technology.
It basically showed the same type of thing though.
It did.
We do very well in most areas, but.
I just like the overall sentiment, Stephanie, of what you're touching on, which is how can we get data that's not just these standardized tests that we all agree are not the be-all, end-all of information? So thinking about how we can get that data and have it sort of, you know, help us in terms of our direction and what we're doing as a school district is a very intelligent way of going about it. So thank you. Next we have an acceptance of a grant. Somebody could please make the motion for the grant?
I move on the recommendation of superintendent that the school committee accept the youth opioid prevention grant in the amount of $19,786.
Second.
Can anyone speak to Dr. O'Shea?
Sure, yeah, and, and I want to thank Sue for her involvement. She, she took this on and wrote the grant and gathered some input from some key administrators and from Shelley Warren, our substance abuse coordinator, and it was competitive grant. And I remember when I came on board, that was one of the things that this committee had encouraged us to take a look at, was competitive grants. And we're really excited to bring $19,786 into the district for prevention and intervention work. And largely it will go towards bolstering elementary health. And I know that's been an ongoing concern for many, including us. And so Sue, thank you for doing that. Anything to, anything to add?
Well, we're hoping to get a .2 increase in position for health to address third, fourth and fifth graders for prevention and teaching them strategies to make good choices as they get older, so.
Great.
Good.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah.
You're welcome. All right, any other questions or comments before we vote? All of those in favor? Thank you. Do we have a motion on the next? No.
No.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we do the overnight field trip request approval? Could somebody just read that motion on the bottom?
I move on the recommendation of superintendent that the school committee approve the overnight field trip request for the students from Long Meadow High School Academic World Quest Team to travel to Washington DC on April 27th through April 29th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
What is that group? The Long Meadow Academic World Quest Team? This is breaking news, we, we added this to your agenda, we couldn't anticipate that it was going to be on agenda. I'm looking at Michelle, maybe she knows, but this was a contest that the students were engaged in and they, they took home honors over the week, over last weekend, I think it was. And so now they're on to the nationals. I'm not sure who the advisor to that is, it might be a parent advisor to that group. Michelle, do you know any of those things?
Yeah.
So.
Field trip clear, so it probably says to.
Yeah, I didn't print mine out.
Well, that's okay, I was just curious.
I think they traveled last year also down to DC. They represented Long Meadow in the nationals competition last year also. So, because I do remember, there's a quick turnaround of flight and they're there for like 24 hours and flying home the next day, so.
That was Stephanie.
What, what did they do? Do we know what they?
Yeah, I think it's academic competition.
It sounds like they're doing well.
They're really smart.
It's awesome.
Yeah, this was breaking news, so we'll try and, we'll try and gather some information on that team.
All right, all those in favor of the trip? Thank you. And last on our agenda, we have Dr. O'Shea's mid-year update. And, yep, the document.
So I don't think this requires any action by the school committee. It's more an opportunity for me to update you on my annual plan. This slide, I don't have a PowerPoint for you, I just wanted to give you one slide to get us oriented. So this is the cycle that illustrates the evaluation process for really all educators, superintendents, administrators, teachers. And so engage in the period of self-assessment, develop goals. So I, I brought goals to you as a committee back in September. You approved those goals as part of my plan, been actively implementing that plan. And so tonight is an opportunity sort of to offer you a mid-cycle report about sort of where I stand with the annual plan that I presented to you. And you'll recall that there were, there are sort of three components of a superintendent's annual plan per the DESI framework. There's a professional practice goal or goals, there's a student learning goal and then a district improvement plan that goes along with it. And so in my plan, I identified two professional practice goals, a student learning goal, and then was committed to the development of a district improvement plan. So last week I had sent to you sort of a narrative report on where I stood with the goals relating to family and community engagement, relating to developing safe and healthy learning environments, relating to elementary science and relating to the development of a district improvement plan. I will say that it's, one of the awkward things about, for me, presenting on my annual plan is that much of what I report on as part of my plan isn't really my work. It's really, you know, none of this happens without the efforts of the administrative team and classroom teachers and so many other people. But I guess, you know, my job is to sort of collect it, collect that work and bring focus to it. So I'm happy to answer any and all questions you might have or I can walk you through the report. It's really just a, a report for your review, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Do you want to give us a cool, very brief thumbnail, just like this is goal one, you know, just, I don't know, your impression?
Yeah, so with regard to, with regard to family and community engagement, that, that has been a focus of mine this year and I've, I've tried to remain visible in the community and to, you know, seek out every opportunity to connect with stakeholders and learn about the district. And we of course had the middle school forums, that was, you know, we were actively involved with that. Budget forums, I've been to every PTO and PAC at least once. We completed a survey of the staff and the community. And I've, I've tried to regularly issue, you know, some statements to the community in the form of what I call LPS News and Notes. And so that's been a kind of a monthly blast to the parents and to the community. Diane and I have tried to kind of ramp up our, our social media presence. There's still some room for growth there. What I'm hoping to do, you know, next steps is really to tap into LCTV. I got to do a better job of that. They're, they're, they're right beside us and so, you know, there's opportunities to record programming there. Sue was kind enough to do a program with me earlier in the year and I'll need to rope in some more folks to do that. With regard to safe and healthy learning environment, I'm really proud of the work we've done in this area. And again, this is not my work, but it, it became a focus of mine. Thanks to Tom and to Sue for heading up two really important district safety teams, one relating to wellness, one relating to sort of building security and safety. We've been really, really intentional in trying to bring our substance use prevention and intervention efforts down to the lower grades. So it really had been focused on the high school and we've really tried to bring the, the message and the, and the learning opportunities down to the middle school and even the elementary school. It's been really well received by parents, I think, and I'm excited that, that the opioid prevention grant will allow us to kind of build on that work.
Keep it up. Say with that, that makes a ton of sense because high school is way too late to be talking about that. So it's, I'm very glad.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's been well received. I mean, it's, it's, it's been, people are eager, I find, for, parents are eager to learn more about that. Keeping our fingers crossed on that Drug Free Communities grant, I think that would be, you know, that represents a huge opportunity for the entire community. If we were fortunate enough to get that, I think we'll find out in the summer. Facility safety has been important to us. We, we've tried to do more around security and doing some tabletop exercises with the, the police department, fire department are great partners with us. I really appreciate everything they've done for us to help us understand how to respond to emergencies and prepare for emergencies. So that's safe and healthy learning environments. You know, back in September, I was looking for a student learning goal. Science was on our minds back then and, and so that became my student learning goal. And it has been really, really important. I'm really glad that this district decided to make that step forward with the science curriculum. The FOS series is, I think it's been well received. Time is the issue. You know, what the staff tells us is their, their challenge to find the time to prep the lessons and to implement the lessons. So we, we got to be creative and explicit about what our expectations are there. The message on, on FOS has been, you know, we want to implement that curriculum in ways that kind of relate to the, the training that's available, the resources that's available to them. And I'm excited that next year, we're going to put more resources into the hands of teachers for implementation of that FOS science series. I think that's a, a great step forward for us.
What are teachers saying, basically that it would help to get training on the particular curriculum?
Yeah, so, so everything. So training, orienting themselves to the materials, training themselves on the techniques, finding time to define the scope and sequence, all those things. I mean, so when you implement a new series, a new curriculum, it takes years really to kind of get all the ducks in a row. But, so they, they, they are very interested in, in, you know, any time that we can give them release time to, to work on scope and sequence, anytime we can bring in the FOS representatives. They came in back on March 10th.
Oh, great.
All the elementary teachers got together. Thank you to Sue for organizing that. And I think that was well received, but again, they, they, they're, they're excited by it, but they also tell us, hey, you know, time is an, time is an issue, the time to prep the lessons and the time to implement it. We are.
So more, it's really, it's, the feedback's been focused on prepping and working together maybe more than training?
Prepping and working together.
Yeah.
And also finding time in the instructional day to deliver the curriculum. You know, I mean, we, we ask a lot of our elementary teachers between science and math and related arts and health and there's so much that is on their plates. And so, you know, trying to coordinate that and align all that work is really difficult. What's great is when we can find chances like we found tonight where, you know, you have the kids doing a recycling project and it, and it, it's multidisciplinary and you're hitting a lot of different standards at one time. So would we, that's, we have to look for opportunities like that. So, you know, if we're, if we're doing some readers or writers workshop, can we, can we introduce science content into that? You know, so that's, you, you look for opportunities to bring that together, but planning that and doing it thoughtfully takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Is it, oh, go ahead, John.
No.
John?
A slight shift here. We had a letter from a parent asking about why we don't have more visibility in Long Meadow News, which is a privately published weekly newspaper. And I'm just wondering, what are your thoughts on that?
I think, I think the parents are right on the money.
Should we be doing more?
I think the parents are right on the money. I, I wondered, I'm going to kid, I wondered if Diane wrote it because she had been saying that to me. She says, we got to, she's like.
She did, she wrote it.
She didn't. But I know she did, but it was, really it's something that we, we want to get our story out there and let parents know about the great things that are going on. I think we've stepped it up with, you know, parent engagement events and social media, but we can't forget good old-fashioned print media and the Long Meadow News because that, that paper gets to so many households, so.
You know, it's a private school that's dominating that paper for the most part and it'd be nice to see the public schools in there saying their own praise. I have another question for you. Someone asked me this and I really wondered about how to respond. We claim basically that we're encouraging students to become critical thinkers, independent, critical thinkers and problem-solving skills, et cetera. How do we measure that? Is it just their responses on the MCAS test? Is that it? Or, I know we used to, and you remember this yourself, we used to do research papers in junior and, and sometimes senior year, which was an independent kind of assessment of whether they'd mastered the skills they had been developing ever since kindergarten.
Yeah.
How do we assess how effective our students are exhibiting critical thinking skill?
So I think some of, what I'm seeing is that, at, when you're talking about state testing, it seems that increasingly they are asking students to develop and defend a, a position, you know, so that the idea of, you know, reasoned argumentation, I think we're seeing more and more of that in some of the state assessments. Knowing that state assessments aren't the be-all and the end-all and sometimes they can distract us from our, our work. You know, the other thing is, I think in, you know, I find that teachers are really interested in performance-based assessments, presentations, they're interested in helping kids develop arguments and defend arguments. I think the FOS science series, you know, demands a lot of critical thought, a lot of inquiry-based learning.
I think the FOS is excellent, from what I've seen of it. But that's an elementary, we'll, we'll see the fruits of that perhaps down the road, but.
The, I, I had a, Sue and I had an opportunity to sit down with Donna Hutton recently and our math specialist over at Center. And the math workshop model at the elementary level, I think, encourages that type of exploration and inquiry. So we're excited about that. And I, so I think that, that will help students with their critical thinking skills so that you can solve a math problem, but also explain your, your thinking. You can defend your, your answer, which is kind of a shift, you know, when you're talking about math instruction. So there's a lot of opportunities, I think. I'm seeing some encouraging signs, but I think that's important, yeah.
Stephanie?
So I, I appreciate you not sugarcoating the FOS implementation because sugarcoating gets you nowhere. Like, I really appreciate you saying honestly what's happened because when we voted on the FOS, it was like, this is prepackaged, this is ready to go, teachers are ready to go. We are, you know, and we all had our hesitations of, and we've all stated, you know, this is the problem with voting through the budget for curriculum materials at the end of the year. So those teachers got that material like August, was it? You know, so in their defense, they got it and then were, were expected to implement it. And even prepackaged, you know, that's a lot. So I would hope, it sounds like there is an elementary science committee that there, if it's time and all of that, you know, that that is being worked out and that we can hear because the, the entire product has not been bought or purchased. And so I think we need to know, is it too much for them to be able to implement in one year? And all of those things. But I think that I do really appreciate the honest, you know, feedback on how that rolled out and that's how you're going to move forward.
Yeah, and, and we want to be modest and reasonable in our expectations on it. And I, I, again, I don't want to move faster than resources allow. But I think sometimes when you get, when you first introduce a curriculum, the tendency, when it's unfamiliar to you as a teacher, you kind of march through it, chapter one, chapter two, chapter three. And in the case of FOS, it's investigation one, investigation two, investigation three. And then as you become familiar with it, you realize, you know, what you can emphasize and de-emphasize and then you start to focus more on the standards as opposed to marching through a curriculum. So, and I'm, what I'm saying when I say that, that's the feedback that we're getting from the science committee. I mean, that's not, you know, that's not any brilliant idea of ours. That, that's really what they're saying to us is if. is if we can approach it with a focus on the standards and not get too hung up on, you know, go do the, go do the FOS science curriculum. So, yeah, we'll, we want to be, I want to do it right, you know. And it takes, it'll take a few years for us to kind of get it implemented to where we want it.
Just so you know, there's been a positive response overwhelmingly with this science and-
And it is aligned with the standard, but I think it probably is, when you're new to it, you are just kind of going more-
And don't forget, they had to share kits. Most of them, so they couldn't collaborate across schools and things like that. So they'll be able to do that next year. But they dug deep into it this year, and the committee is on it. They just reflected on this year's, a couple weeks ago, they met and came back together. And they have summer work planned and integration work planned, so I don't want to steal Marty's stuff.
No, no. Well, that's what I said. That's the awkwardness of having that.
They are, they're doing a lot of stuff with it, and people really love the FOS, and the kids love the FOS, too.
So in terms of time, oh, sorry, is it just that-
The time is the, the time that they can actually teach the science during the school day. That's their main, if you ask anybody, that's their main, we don't have enough time to get to this. We can't get to this. Where are ways we can integrate into other blocks of the day so that we can do it?
Is it because the block itself is too finite because the lessons are more in-depth, sort of?
Yes. They're really inquiry-based, and you can dig almost like five layers deep into investigations.
So there needs to be a way that it's incorporated into a schedule that's not just blocked in a systemic way that we would typically block a subject.
Right, but we also have all the other subjects that have to get, you know, taught every day, too.
Right. If we're going to use it, we need to figure out a way that, though, it's going to work.
Yeah. So we just posted for summer work for integration for science and ELA.
Russ?
Yeah, I think at the elementary level in particular, though, science is something that we should stress because that's the time when kids are actually willing to say, I'm excited by science. And once you get to middle school and high school, you kind of lose it. So I don't know how we're going to do that. But I know when the kids come home, that's almost always what they talk to me about.
I just read a research paper about, if you don't develop a love of science in K-1, 2 in kids, then you've lost them. Unless they're really, like, science-minded. So we need a really science in math.
The kids, though, they almost always come home, they hate math, but when they come home and talk about science, it's like, so I'd like them to continue that. I mean, really, it's important. And I don't know how we can, because everything's driven by ELA math, the testing until fifth grade. But it doesn't really make sense to just leave science out until fifth grade.
Right.
It's not that we do that, but it's hard to really make that a focus.
So they're thinking about ways to, you know, make science longer, do more science in one day, and have a longer block and maybe less on another.
That's great.
Yeah. They're working hard.
It's a good crew.
It's an awesome crew. Yeah.
Then the last part of it was the development of a district improvement plan. And, you know, my expectation is that we're going to have a plan in place to guide us beginning in 17, 18. I think there's three things that, three big goals that are kind of taking shape. One is alignment in, alignment of curriculum. The second one is social, emotional well-being of students. And then the third is instructional differentiation, making sure that we're reaching all learners wherever they are. So I see us developing some specific plans that are agreed upon across all schools to drive those goals. So that's kind of where we are. So a little snapshot of-
Thank you very much, Marty. I hope I didn't put you on the spot.
No, 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 happy to. I didn't want to, didn't want to bore.
No, it's really, no, it's actually really helpful. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Can we move on to?
Can I just say something to the goals, I guess? So one of my big goals is, and I'm not sure how we do this over in the district improvement plan, but I think one goal should also be that everybody, all kids in every grade, regardless of what teacher you have or anything else, that you're getting the same basic level of instruction. So that's something that I hear quite frequently is, well, you know, in this one location, you know, it's just not the same. I wish I heard this other. And some of that is just, they don't even know what the other person's teaching or whatever. But some of it is actually, if you look at the data, it kind of confirms some of that. And so I think that's another important piece to any school is to make sure that the basic level of instruction in every single classroom is, you know, at least to the level of proficient, you know, if not above that. And that's evaluations and all that. But I think that's really important because that's something that becomes a real problem if you get one particular subject and, you know, the kids do really well in that, and the next year they're ahead, and the other kids are behind or vice versa.
Right.
So, you know, that's something I think we should look at.
Consistency.
And also sort of collaboration between the schools and among the teachers?
Yeah, a lot of it is PD and common planning time.
This seems like such a theme that as we've become so much more intense with what we're expecting from teachers, what we're expecting from students to churn out, this professional development and planning time, it's like, it's going. It's not, and we're seeing it, how it's impacting the classroom and how it's impacting teachers. So it's, it's come to my mind so many times during your, you know, your presentation and our discussion tonight that I think we really need to look at that, you know, how are we doing as a district with professional planning time? And can we figure out a way for teachers, you know, at the different schools to collaborate? And that's how you get a really rich, consistent curriculum, is that, you know, sort of inter-district.
Well, I would say that and evaluation. Evaluation's really important because you got to make sure you're, I think it's that and making sure that people are being evaluated so you know that they're meeting the standards they expect of everybody.
But I, yeah, I agree with you. I am really concerned about how we can, I know this is a big question. It's the end of our meeting. But how can we provide that critical planning time for teachers, you know? Is that something we, as a committee for a goal next year, do we want to look at that? Do we want to talk about that more? And I'm just sort of putting it out there with a question mark. You know, can we do better?
And I think, I just want to piggyback, Russ, because when we talk about evaluating teachers, there is, that's a hot topic because you don't, how you evaluate is important. So, you know, the whole thing about tying the MCAS into teacher evaluations. You know, we don't, it's really a holistic approach in qualitative data as well as quantitative, but not relying on those MCAS. Right.
Yeah, I think MCAS is a minor factor. It's, except when you see a teacher that's at 10%, everybody else is at 90%. That's something I don't like to see because I know that that's problematic. Besides that, I don't think MCAS is very effective either.
Yeah, I think if, all these things are tied together, I don't think any of these are mutually exclusive. So, you know, if you, if you have an agreed upon, if you have the time to develop an agreed-upon instructional framework and an approach to instruction that you're expecting of all teachers, so you have the time to develop the framework, you get everybody on board with that framework, and then you use the supervision evaluation process to make sure that it's being implemented with fidelity. So all those things are, it's all connected. Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that it's not just a, you know, you didn't meet this percent, you know, because everyone hears evaluations, you hear teacher, and you hear MCAS, it's like, no, you know, they're all those pieces that you're looking at.
Yeah, we wouldn't want that culture. We wouldn't want that sort of fear of MCAS results to drive instruction or the evaluation process. Yeah.
It's not, I mean, the one that keeps coming to mind is when we saw 13% of proficient or whatever it was, that wasn't good.
You know, that, that's something where, that's the only example I can think of, you know. If it's like 98 versus 88 versus 78, you know, that's all, who knows, different kids and all that. But when you see consistently a certain area that's so much lower, you know, and it's always lower, that's probably, that's what I have a problem with. And really, that's the only example I would give of MCAS issues. I think the rest of it is really, I think kids have a pretty good idea, actually, generally, of, is this a good teacher that's really helping me learn? Do I like going to school? And that's part of it. Sometimes you get a teacher that you don't love, but they're actually a great teacher, and they teach you a lot, and maybe they just don't have the same mannerisms, but I think there's a ton of factors, and I agree. MCAS is not, you know, the number-one factor by any means.
And you have 70, 80, whatever, plus kids who are struggling in a class, you're going to see that the next year. You're going to get that information that all these kids are behind for whatever reason. Yes, there's all different pieces. Anything else on future agenda items before we have a motion to adjourn? Hey, would someone like to make the motion?
I move for adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.